All right. I think we can go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, February 27th, 2023, 7:00 p.m. If you could all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
President.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Ben Osberg.
Here.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
All right, I am looking for approval of the agenda as submitted unless there are changes that need to be made. Thank you, do I have support?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? I am opposed, motion moves forward. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. I'm not seeing anyone in our audience, so I will continue moving along. We have our council meeting minutes of February 13th, 2023. I'm looking for approval of those meeting minutes unless there were changes that need to be noted.
Aha.
Thank you, do I have support? Thank you, all in favor? I, those opposed? All right, motion moves forward. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review council payable for this evening.
I did. It's lesser than we have been approving the tax council meetings. I had a few questions for John just on some of the tax refunds, but apparently it's very common for some of the corporate holdings to overpay taxes for whatever reason they do, and so those are apparently what happens regularly. So with that, I will make a motion for checks 764-73 through 76522, EFT 383, ACH 378 through 384, for a total of $4.38, $8.09, and 26 cents.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions regarding the council payable this evening?
One question, just out of curiosity.
Yes.
Where were the, or what was the scoop of the hazardous tree removals?
Scott.
Scott, can you answer that one? I believe you're referring to at the wastewater treatment plant. There were some very large trees that were in danger of coming down on top of treatment.
Gotcha. Did you get them on before the ice storm? Were they out before the ice storm?
They actually were, yes. There was one very large dead oak tree and two cottonwoods, which are very known for coming down with them.
All right, do I have support for the motion that Brandon has brought forward? Thank you, Terry. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yeah.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
All right, moving along into our action items, we have four for this evening. The first is the appointment of Lee Fisher to the Planning Commission for a term to expire 6/30 of 2024.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lee Fisher to the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you so much, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
All right, next action item is our annual Williamson poverty exemption resolution. I'll turn this right over to our city manager, John Hannafin.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So annually, prior to board review, we established the poverty exemption guidelines. There's an income standard and asset test for that. What that does is for folks that are unable to contribute to the public good based on their income situation or their asset situation, these guidelines are established to allow board review to relieve them from paying property taxes. And if you leaf through that, you can see that the income guidelines are, I would say, fairly restrictive and fairly low, which is consistent with the resolution year over year. Happy to answer any questions you may have. It's a several-step process for someone to make the application, and there's some certifications. And this does only apply to owner-occupied housing, so you can't qualify it through the legal program or anything like that. And there are other social programs for things like that.
Great.
So what we're having, asking for tonight is the adoption of the resolution to adopt poverty exemption eligibility requirements, income standards, asset test, and application for 2023.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
Just wondering, who is the board of review?
Yes, go ahead, John.
So the board of review is appointed by this body, and they hear, and it's a separate, it's appointed by this board, but it really has separate powers, and what they do is they hear appeals for property tax. And so they meet annually, and they start meeting here very soon.
Okay, and how many people qualify for this, just in general? The usual kind of thing?
I'm not sure.
We talking five or 50?
I probably, I don't think anybody has made application, to my knowledge, in recent years. That doesn't mean they haven't, you know, five or 10 years ago, but nobody that I'm aware of.
I'm not questioning, I'm just kind of wondering.
Yeah, it's a fair question, right? Yeah.
One second, Dan. I mean, I actually did this when we, I didn't apply for the poverty, but I went to board of review regarding my property taxes when I purchased the home back in 2001. So residents have that ability to go and dispute requests that their property taxes have increased. It's made up of a three-person body there, community members, they have to be City of Williamson residents, our assessor, I don't know if our assessor sits in on the board of review, he does now. So it's a very easy process. You know, I think there's probably a handful of people that come forward in March and October because we do it twice a year. It's, you know, we make sure that the community knows about it, but it's really up to the resident to determine if they want to do something like that.
So this is the same board that if I thought my house had been overly valued and overly taxed, would come to that board and say?
Yes, and bring your substantiating paperwork as to why you feel that there should be an adjustment made. Dan.
Also, the poverty exemption eligibility, the table we use for that, I believe, if I remember correctly, from prior years, it's pretty standard throughout the state. We have, and this isn't something we came up with on our own, we use the guidelines set out by the state.
Okay, just curious about that, thank you.
Great, good. With that being said, if there's no other questions or discussion, I'm looking for that motion to move this forward.
I'll make a motion to adopt poverty exemption eligibility requirements, income standards, asset test, and application for 2023.
Thank you, Dan, do I have support?
Second.
Thank you, both. Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
All right, moving on to our next action item, it is the 2023 North Putnam Street Project. This is the DTE Detroit Edison Streetlight Relocations. We have a memo from our city engineer, Scott DeRees, and I turn it over to him.
All right, as noted, there's a memo in the packet, it's a very short, sweet-type thing. In order for us to move forward with our Putnam Street project, there are some poles that are in the way. Some of the poles have streetlights on them, and they're there at the desire of the city. The streetlight, or the power poles, we don't have to pay to have those moved because DTE's there, you know, using our right of way. But since the streetlights are there at our request to light the streets, we have to have approval to pay to move those.
How many streetlights are they going to have to do?
I don't have an exact count because there's several locations throughout the project.
Okay. When these, when these are moved, because this is going to be a very cumbersome project, is there going to be temporary lighting put in place?
They're actually going to put the permanent lighting in place because we've already worked with them as far as where the, you know, the curbing is for the new road, so they've already cited where the new poles are going to go.
Oh, perfect, so we won't be without streetlight.
And this is a permanent move, they won't?
It is a permanent move. You know, and there's other utility work that's going on, not related to this motion, but I'll make a mention of it right now. Consumers is going to be in there in the coming couple of months to put a new gas main in prior to the project as well. Verizon's got some responsibility for some projects, so there's several utility companies that are doing utility work in advance of our project. This is the only one that I'm aware of that we have to pay for.
Okay. Questions for Scott, anyone? Yes, Scott?
Do you have a foregone to figure out how much light is supposed to be everywhere, all over the place, to get to them, or streetlights?
Actually, that's all handled with the DTE street lighting folks. They have converted, I believe everything's going over to, or already is, and it's being relocated, so if there's old stuff, the new stuff's going in as LED. And they have a particular way that it has to span across and then how it throws the light down. That was one of the things that they were worried about as we walked the site and looked at the location of the new pole locations.
Great question. We actually just had one replaced, and it looks a lot different on the street now.
I don't have the numbers, but they make sure that it casts down where it's supposed to at the intersection.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion to approve the agreement with DTE for relocation of streetlight poles that conflict with the 2023 North Putnam Street Reconstruction M.L.A.T. project for the amount of $16,470 and 90 cents, not to exceed.
Thank you, Terry, do I have support? Thank you, Steve. If there's no other questions or discussion, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
All right, moving right along, our last action item this evening is to set the public hearing for TIPPA 2A, or sorry, TIPPA 2B Plan Amendment, March 27th, 2023, at 7:05 p.m., and I think it's as simple as that. We do not have a memo in the packet regarding that. So would somebody like to make that motion?
Someone.
Thank you, do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no discussion regarding this public hearing, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along on our agenda, to our discussion items, we have our robe diet. Do we have an update?
Well, we know that MDOT, we heard about this third-hand from someone who was going to be attending the movie, the meeting. MDOT was having an internal meeting to, you know, talk over the questions that we put to them. So I don't know if that's occurred yet, or if it was occurring this week, next week, but it's very close.
All right, excellent. So once you hear back, we'll look forward to an update for that. Thank you. We have not received any correspondence, so I'll move right along to our department head reports, and we've got your memo in here, John, but I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you so you can kind of go through that.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. Just a reminder, we do have our vision session on March 1st at 6:00 p.m. at the NESA building. We are going to film that for folks, and we'll put it on our website when we're done, and then if I know a council member or two may have a conflict, so you'll be able to watch the recap. The public hearing you did set for TIPA, it is an amendment to the development plan, and that's to, for the updated purchase agreement for the Ice House project, which is moving forward, which is pretty exciting. That's actually going to Planning Commission next week, next Tuesday, so that's good. The kayak landing naming contest is fully underway. So far, the two emotional leaders are Park and Carp and Kayak and Quack, so please do get your name submissions in, so I hope we have more competition for those.
I agree, I agree, all right. Sounds pretty good, they're mint.
Yeah, so.
Kayak and Quack, I mean, how are you going to beat that?
I think we've got, even including those two, I think we've got about a dozen submissions so far, so yeah, it's been a good process so far. You know, it's always a fun time when you throw it out to the masses, but.
I, yes, absolutely.
I think we'll have a lot of good choices to make. I did include the proposed agenda for this coming Wednesday. One of the things I want to point out is that, you know, a lot of these things, we'll see these year after year, economic development and stuff that we should always be focused on, you know, opportunities, things like that, but we'll obviously have more details. And the goal for Wednesday is to start the conversation as we start our planning for the next fiscal year. And again, some of these things are multi-year themes, transportation, et cetera, but looking forward to that, it's my first time with you as a group going through that process, and I'm pretty excited about that. One last thing for me, I did include, just for your convenience, the written copy of my annual evaluation, so the goal would be for all of you to fill that out, get that back to us by a week from Thursday. That way I can compile it, and then we can meet on the 11th to discuss.
So we fill it out on the form itself?
Yep, yep, you can write right on the form. And you can drop it off, or if you have a scanner on the email, that's fine, too.
Excellent, all right.
That's all I have. I know Scott has some things, some updates that I'll need to hear.
Any questions for John before we move along?
Just for, you said a week from?
Thursday, yep.
Thursday.
Yep.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and, we'll go to Scott, and then we'll do Chief after Scott, so Scott, go ahead.
All right, there is bad news, there's some water seeping out on Church Street, so tomorrow morning, 7:30 a.m., there's some barricades that are going out, it's going to impact school traffic in the morning. I was just chatting with Bob, he's going to throw an NEXL out to the community as well. So we believe that probably the previous work with the sewer probably jostled some of the water system apart, and something seeped, and now it's starting to leak, so unfortunately we get to dig that up again. And then we had our open house, that was very successful, and we had a handful of people show up, but it was very good discussion, and I'm really pleased with that. And you'll see trees on North Putnam, the ones that have to come down for the project, they're going to be getting going in the next few weeks.
All right, yes, John.
Just on that front, I thought Scott did a great job. I was able to be here for most of it, we did have the Chamber Annual Awards Dinner, which was also nice, I filled a report out now, that was a great event. But Scott did a great job with residents, and I also think his meeting with folks, I know Mr. Lanyon lives on the route, but meeting with them, and particularly the ones that had more challenges where it was, they were, you know, we were going to have to cut down the tree and replace it, or with easements, that one-on-one approach. I mean, the great thing about, you know, the size of our community, we're still scalable, we can do things like that, and so it's kept, set the bar pretty high for all the products that we have going on, so his magical mystery tour will kick off again as we learn more about the Williams Street project, and so I totally thought he did a great job, and it was, and we did the right thing, too, by having the open house, and we had, we were going to have it on Wednesday, and we had, you know, obviously the terrible weather, so we were able to move it to the next day, but I thought it was very well attended, so it was, yeah.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott, for your efforts, going door-to-door, being able to answer questions, being able to work with our community like that, that speaks volumes, because when we don't do that, and when we don't educate, and we don't reach out, it can just, you know, take it in a completely different direction that we don't want it to. And I have, I already told John, I will go door-to-door with you on William Street, maybe I can share the task with Dan. But, you know, I think if we just keep that as our practice, best practice standards, we'll be successful with all these projects over the next couple of years. It's, you know, this is definitely going to be a very full year of projects, but I know that we're up to the task. Anything else, Scott, that you would like to share before I move on to Chief?
Not a problem.
All right, Chief?
So.
I know it's not going to be your standard answer, nothing to report.
Well, it's not.
Good.
And so I'm going to give you the longest report I've ever done in 11 years I was here, and I hope it's the longest one, or however long I'm here.
All right.
And so, so first of all, I want to introduce Michael Pearl. He's not my bodyguard, he just called about five minutes, and he never sees daylight, he's our midnight, one of our midnight. And so, hey, can I come into this meeting?
Sure.
Are you sure you want to come to this meeting? And so he came on in, so that's Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Of course. The other thing is, I wanted to talk to everybody about our website. I would encourage you to go to the police department website and look at CrimeDAR. CrimeDAR will tell you what we are doing. That's why I don't generally report to city council, because it's, Vani uploads it on a daily basis, so you see what we're doing on a real-time basis. It's very generic, but it's, that's what police work's all about, because when we deal with these people, a lot of times, it's the worst day of their life. And so you would never hear me in a council meeting talking about these things. And so when I say, there's, smile and say there's no report, it means go look at our website to see what we're doing, because that's all we're going to say. And even when something more major comes, when I say no report, that doesn't mean they're not out working, they are doing ordinary things. When there is an extraordinary thing, I would do a press release, and we'll get that to council before it goes out, but that's all the information you're going to get. We don't get any special information on any of the investigation, so look at the website for CrimeDAR.
And how do we find the website, again?
It's on the city website.
City website.
Yep, yep, just Google Williamsburg Police, it'll come up that way as well, but it's on the city website, go to the police department. And so, I mean, that's for the community, they need reminders on that, too. That's where to find out what's going on. Another thing on our website is NICSOL. Tells you what's going on here, and when you sign up, you can sign up just for the city, but you can sign up for Lansing, it'll give you some options on there. And most of us, we're going to end up moving into Lansing or someplace else, and so it's very interesting to know where the crashes are and when things are going to be shut down, so I'd encourage that. Then also, Smart 911. It's a relatively new thing, although it's been, even before I left, it was out there. And so the residents, you can go in personally to Smart 911 if you have special needs, that you want first responders to know, if they're coming to your place, if there's somebody there with special needs, or there's special things you want them to know, and so it's for your benefit to need to know that that option is out there. So having said that, that I won't talk about things, there are two things I want to talk about. And so they didn't happen in our jurisdiction, but the swatting at Oakhamus High School and the shooting at MSU. That affected our police department, that affected our community, and so, but what I want to assure you is, our schools are as protected as they could be. Now, having said that, so is MSU. That doesn't prevent bad things from happening, but I've been probably seeing the superintendent more than I've been seeing the city manager. I said, Adam, I like seeing you, but it doesn't have to be every day, but we are very well prepared, and they work closely with us, and we work closely with them, so I just wanted to reinforce that. And then one of my top priorities I'm still working on is personnel. And as you can, the officers we have currently are awesome, but we have some vacancies, and so as you can imagine, in this environment, that's a challenge. I'm still working towards that, so that is my report.
Well, thank you, and that was fantastic, and I appreciate all that information, as I'm sure the rest of the council members do and our community. It's good information to have, and I would definitely encourage our community to look those things up, that Chief Young has mentioned, the Smart 911, the NICSOL. If you're traveling into Lansing, East Lansing, because you work in those communities, even though you reside in Williamson, I have that set up. So definitely thank you so much for that, Chief, and I do love it when you smile and say nothing anymore, because I know that we, you know, that's okay, that's fine. And also the CrimeDAR, if our residents don't know about that, you'll be able to look that information up, and if you do have questions, feel free to contact our city offices, and we can get those answers for you.
I believe NICSOL has an app, too, right? I can alert you?
Yep.
Sort of Smart, I was going to say, especially for residents that have children or animals, stuff like that, like you put on there, you can put on there like, hey, I live here with myself, my wife, and my two kids, and so like when police or fire shows up, like they know, this is the residence of this house, so all of them are out, like we don't have to risk ourselves to go back in there, so like, that's really important.
Absolutely, and probably medical needs, too, if somebody, you know, I know that people wear, you know, the ID bracelets and stuff, but for older citizens in our community, that's such a great tool for people to be able to, you know.
Medication, some kind of, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing that, Bob, I really appreciate it, and I hope our community will, you know, look into that and use that as another tool. Moving along, we've got our committee, subcommittee reports. Do I have committee members that would like to make mention of meetings that they've attended? Steve?
I attended the TIPA meeting where the, we passed the amendment, which will be addressed at the public hearing, and then by the council.
Great, so you're learning all sorts of stuff.
Well, I learned one thing.
Being the newest person at the table.
Yes, and I, because I didn't have experience as to what was involved with that, I thought I should abstain, and I was quickly told I can't abstain.
No, yeah, you can't, yeah, only certain reasons. Yeah, all right, well, thank you. Anyone else have anything to share? We did have our DDA meeting this past week, lots of activity going on, as city manager John Hannafin mentioned, our Williamson Chamber of Commerce did the community awards this week, recognizing community members, businesses for outstanding work, so we appreciate that, and I know that the chamber is going through some improvements and changes and encouraging membership of businesses in Williamson and surrounding areas, because our Williamson Chamber of Commerce is not just for our Williamson businesses. So, you know, it's good to see those type of activities going on with our organizations here in town. We also talked about the commercials, our seasonal commercials, our, so we're still working on that so that we can continue that branding effort for Williamson, and once we have something available, we'll bring that back so that we can show council what we're doing and working on, and I'm sure we'll talk about that a little bit on Wednesday evening as well. Moving along, then, we have another opportunity for audience participation. I'm not seeing anyone out in the audience, so I'll keep moving along to council member comments, and I'll start down here to my right with Tom.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Terry?
That was a good report. Those are the kind of things I've been interested in, those sorts of things, I'm a statistics kind of a guy, you know? And look at this, it's right there in the web, that's good, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I enjoy your fingernailing.
Oh, aren't you a girl? Aren't you a girl?
You're distracting.
Stop looking. All right, Brandon?
Not to delay too long, but one, I want to thank Scott for all the work he's been doing on the North Putnam project. I wasn't able to attend Thursday, but any questions that I've had, or more so I believe my wife has had about the project, he's been great about answering about whether, you know, what tree my yard is going to get cut down or not, so thank you for all the work you've been doing on that. To Chief, I would say, you know, like we're talking about recruiting attention, if there's things that we can do to assist in that, please let us know, because like we've talked a lot about this is an important issue. And third, again, Chief, I truly appreciate all the effort that went into your response, not just MSU, but especially the Oakhamus High School incident. I know that was a tough time for you and the school here, and so I appreciate, you know, the immediate response from everyone in your department to securing the area and making sure that this wasn't another hoax call that was going out to all of them, so I really appreciate everything that you and your department did.
Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback, I appreciate it.
Yeah, just a quick comment on a play, we just had one person on stage for an hour and a half with no intermission.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, it was pretty interesting, and I've never been to a play there that doesn't And I've never been to a play there that doesn't leave you, even if you kind of don't like the play, it leaves you thinking about things, so, yeah.
Thank you. Dan?